Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Councilmembers Catonello and Wolkowitz are excused. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a motion for executive minutes of April 27th and executive minutes of May 11th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Discussions already taking place in executive, so roll call, vote please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
A motion for the regular minutes of April 27th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Okay, roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And a motion for the regular minutes of May 11th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Welcome all. Thunderstorms, I guess, is keeping our crowd down today. Just a couple of comments and a few things to share. One, once again, a beautiful and well-done Memorial Day celebration put together by the Patriotic Celebrations Committee. Carmel, if you can take that back to committee. They truly keep a memorial in Memorial Day and really bring forward what it's all about. And it was perfectly timed as they did the folding of the flag to the sounds of 11 o'clock bells, so it's, you know, right down to the wire. Maybe we'll hold off a little bit until we see if Nino comes back in here, but I want to thank all those that attended the meeting last night at Civic Center, talking about the redevelopment project for that site. It was very helpful with the questions and the comments that were shared, and more to come on that. And we are always recognizing our high school students' academic and athletic accomplishments, and I want to wish best of luck to several of our high schoolers that are representing Madison High School in the Group Two state championships, including Helene Roland, who will be competing in shot put, discus, and javelin. Rose Siriello at doing hurdles, 400 meter and 800 meter and high jump. Kara Smith with the 1600 meter, and she'll be part of the 4x800 meter relay. Megan Timmons, 1600, and also part of that 4x8. Libby Johnson, part of the 4x800 team, and Lauren D'Atillo, also part of the 4x800 relay team. And on the, for the boys states, that will be at South Plainfield High School, we have our 4x800 relay team, Will Hederson, Connor Riley, Noah Buzzinkai, and Sawyer Tadano. Will is also competing in the 400 and 800, and Connor in the 1600, and Noah in the 3200. And the, that team, the foursome, set the high school record, Madison High School record for, at eight minutes, 18 seconds for the 4x800. So we wish them best of luck on, whenever the states are this weekend. And I'll hold off my last comment a few more minutes and go to communication, or I'm sorry, reports from committees. Media affairs, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. The 2015 Madison Farmers Market will be opening June 4th in a new location, a new time. They're moving to Central Avenue between Main Street and Cook Avenue, and the hours will return to 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The new location will provide expanded access to the parking in the merchant lots on Cook Avenue and Elmer Street, as well as in the Central Avenue school parking lot after 4:00 p.m. on school days and any time during the summer. There'll be a ribbon cutting Thursday, June 4th, at 2:00 p.m. on Central Avenue and Main Street to mark the opening. The market season will run from June 4th to October 15th. Alstead Farms, Melix Town Farm, and Fachiano Farm will be selling their Jersey Fresh produce again. Also returning to the market will be Kettle Corn, Pick-a-Licious, Paolo's Kitchen, Gourmet Nuts and Dried Fruits, and Secret Garden Soap of Madison, Redsmith, and Squeezed Fresh Lemonade. The market will feature music and expanded programming throughout the season. The Madison Farmers Market is presented by the Downtown Development Commission and sponsored by Drew University and Gary's Wine and Marketplace. We also want you to put on your calendar. Bottle Hill Day is scheduled for Saturday, October 3rd. And the event will be expanding onto Kings Road this year, and applications and sponsorship information will be going out within the next two weeks. Oh my gosh, that's amazing. Okay. Senior citizens, Patrolman Chad Ripka presented a talk on scams and frauds to a small group all who had experienced attempted scams. We will collaborate, the seniors will collaborate with Chad on publicizing his home security review for seniors in the next newsletter. The Stretch and Flex class will be expanded to a third day this summer, and the great room is proved to be too small, so they're going to increase the options of a third choice of this class, and the students can take either one, two, or three days per week at a cost of $5 per class. And the next senior trip is to the New York Botanical Garden, the Bronx, on June 2nd, where they will tour the Frida Kahlo exhibit before individuals can explore the grounds and have lunch on their own. The trip is filled. Seniors are a very active bunch, and their programs are very popular. That's all, Mayor.
And do you have any public safety?
I don't have a report for public safety, no.
Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Message from the electric department. The crews completed all their confined space training. They also installed new poles on Woodland, Britton, and Delwood. They continue to perform line clearance, because that's real important, and continue to do service upgrades and removals and mark out requests. They did install a new secondary and primary cable on Britton Street and a new transformer as well. One of the, one of the things I'd like to talk about is what the Madison Electric Curl Tailment voluntary program, and we'd like to make an effort to talk to everybody. During the summer months, May to September, there's an increased energy demand, mostly from the usage of air conditioning. Nearly 20% of the total cost of Madison's electricity costs from a peak charge incurred on the hottest days of the summer. So we're again asking everybody, you could save on your electric bill, you could save on your taxes, and you're helping to save the planet as well, but we're asking the Madison residents and businesses to help reduce those peak charges by voluntarily decreasing their energy consumption for just a few hours on the hottest days of the year. It will really help us to change, you know, to save probably about $100,000 or more in peak hour electric rates. So if we can ask everybody to do that, we'd appreciate it. The water department has been very busy. They, they've been doing water sampling for state mandated testing, and you'll probably see that report within the next month or so. They have a lot of requests for locating and marking underground utilities for homeowners, contractors, as much, and they also have to look for the lines when the DPW is putting in the, let me see, the, I lost my, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought. As the trees are being placed, we have to be very careful, so, sorry. They're doing curb boxes, we're checked all over town, and they were turned off and on, so that's a big part of their day. The hydrant flushing will be started, with the hydrants at Drew University being the first. There's constant meters being replaced due to age and leaks, et cetera. And the static water levels at each well were taken as needed quarterly by the state. The levels were comparable to last quarter's levels, which is very good. They continue to make sure that all the emergency generators are run and tested in the event that we have any storms or whatever, our wells are in working water. And besides all of that, they have a storage building that they've started to reorganize, and that's like real important for future inventory and to know where or whatever is needed. I do want to just say a couple of things about the Madison Memorial Day Parade as liaison to the Patriotic Celebration Committee. This is, they're an absolute wonderful bunch of people to work with, and they worked very hard on this parade this year. And for anybody that was there, besides the regular essay contest, they, we also ran a contest for poems that were just outstanding, and I'm hoping that the Madison Eagle gives us the opportunity to, you know, put them in the paper so that you could see what the young people of Madison are doing. There's a beautiful artwork that was, was on display. I did leave one framed photo of that downstairs on the, in the rotunda. So take a look at it, and makes you really proud of these young kids that are coming up. They're very bright, and they're very aware of what Memorial Day is. So I want to thank them for working so hard. They worked a long time, months on this. Thank you.
You. And we have finance, borough clerk, and if you have anything for health also, Mr. Landrigan.
Absolutely, I do have Ben's report. Okay, what you have seeing in front of you is an attempt to answer a question that came up at the last meeting. It's in regards to a subject that's near and dear to all our hearts, property taxes. At the last meeting, I explained that from the Board of Ed's end, their increase in our property taxes, the tax levy was 5.3%, yet they had said that their increase was 3.9. The simple, short answer is that they work on a fiscal year, June to July, we work on a calendar year. That's the effective, that's the principal reason why the difference in the percentages. And this actually, this chart is very well done, and it shows the difference in dollars from calendar year to calendar year, and their piece did go up 5.3%. The other interesting part of it, and this is free, if anybody wants it, you can pick a copy up, and if you have any questions, contact myself or the administration, is that when we talked about the budget, we said that we were going to raise property taxes 1.5%. But in reality, the effect on each individual home was about half that, and the reason is there's more people at the table. You have Reology contributing to the overall pot, so the individual homeowner, and thanks to a lot of development, only saw a 0.7% increase in their property tax from the borough's end. All right? But please take a look at this. It gives a very, very good explanation of where your taxes go, what they were last year, and what they are this year. And please feel free to contact me if any questions. In addition, the MAF presented the borough with a check today for $50,000. That's part of their annual contribution toward the debt service. And the electric rebate program, which was begun last year by Ben, so far this year we have 154 applicants under the program, so that's very good news. I believe that's up significantly from last year. All right. In regards to the Board of Health, I just have two items here, and I'll read them. Men and women are encouraged to check their heart health at the adult health screening on Thursday, June 11th, 2015, starting at 8:00 a.m., and this is at the Health Department. Registration is required and can be completed by calling 973-593-3079, and then selecting extension one. And that starts weekdays beginning May 14th. And finally, men are encouraged to attend the free men's cancer screening on Monday, June 15th, starting at 6:00 p.m. Signups begin now at the Health Department. Thank you, Mayor, that's it.
And Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, from the Public Works Department, the department has planted over 100 trees for the Shade Tree Commission this year, and they've now placed over 200 hanging baskets around our downtown. From the Engineering Department, Roads, the Ridgeville Avenue bid opening was held on May 14th with Cephalion Sons as the apparent low bidder. The lowest bid, however, was over the amount appropriated by the council, so there's a need for a supplemental appropriation, which we'll be discussing tonight. Additionally, state processing and funding agreements will delay the award date for this project slightly. However, the construction schedule will be discussed with the low bidder prior to the work starting in hopes of maintaining a reasonable progress over the summer months. And finally, on that project, PSENG is now progressing on the gas main replacement work, which they started about a month ago. Our six-millimeter overlay projects were completed prior to the holiday weekend. A portion of the signage and striping work remains to be done, but Tilcon paving and Denville line striping both proceeded quickly and without interruption. The residents of Morris Place, Danforth, Sherwood, Longwood, Candlewood, Fox Chase, and the surrounding neighborhoods should be congratulated on their cooperation during this project. For Hartley Dodge, a presentation to the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust Fund of the East Wing renovation project is scheduled for Monday evening at the Morris County Library. And from the Parks Department, or covering parks, rather, Memorial Park Sports Field slash ice rink, quotes have been received for skating rink drainage improvements, and contracts will be prepared for the apparent low bidder, anticipating some work in the fall. For Bailey Ellard, bid documents to improve the sports field and resolve the final environmental issues are being assembled in-house, anticipating summer bids and fall construction. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and the Economic Development Authority have indicated there are site remediation funds that will be available to assist with the project. At the conclusion of this project, Madison will apply for those grants with the assistance of our licensed site remediation professional, Roy Redman. And finally, for the Dodge Field Basketball Courts, replacement of both the lighting system and the resurfacing of the courts is scheduled to take place this summer. Contracts are being prepared to accomplish this work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just finish up my two comments. Bob already mentioned this, that yesterday I had a visit in my office from Nino Covielo and Brenda Catonello from the Madison Athletic Foundation, presenting the borough with the check for $50,000, representing their continued dedication and hard work on the fundraising to pay for that great facility. And somewhat related to this is this year's Kessler Institute for Rehabilitation calendar, and there, for the month of July, which makes it the centerfold, is our very own Dave Carver, pictured on the fields with a very large mitt, but it tells a story of his challenges that came from a spinal injury and disease, and his recovery, and how Kessler is so important. So here, and we congratulate Dave on being recognized for his hard work, and he's making progress in every day. And communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Okay, this is the first of two invitations for discussion from our residents. You may comment on items on the agenda discussions or items that are listed under the consent resolution agenda. Items such as ordinances have hearings, and you can comment on those when they come up. The items for discussion today will be a presentation from Troop 7 on recycling sticker program. There'll be a discussion on appropriation of additional $6,000 for restoration and renovation east wing of Hartley Dodge, appropriation of $200,000 for remediation of Bailey Ellard Fields, and sports-related concussion protocol. And anyone wants to comment on any of those items or the resolutions, please step forward, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we go on to agenda discussions. And we have representatives from our Troop 7, please come up, introduce yourselves, and talk about the program. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to introduce Diana Donowitz, who is with Seven as our, on our troop committee finances for the troop. She's out in our troop, like, in the control area last year, he's there.
This year he serves as our troop's chaplain's aide. And my name is Richard Zipper, and I'm assistant scoutmaster with the Troop 7, which is sponsored by St. Vincent's Church. Right now, I'd like to ask Tom to go over the points of our recycling sticker fundraising project that we'd like to put forth tonight.
So Troop 7 wishes to sell these 8x8 round stickers with recycling logos to homeowners, and the stickers will cost $3 each. The stickers will help homeowners and workers identify which bins are for recycling cans, recycled bottles and cans. Scouts in uniform wish to sell the stickers in their neighborhoods. A local business, the Garden State News on Main Street, has offered to sell the stickers available for sale in the store. All proceeds will go to Troop 7, Boy Scout Troop. Troop 7 uses the money to, money raised for camping fees, badges, camping supplies, one-half scholarships, two scout attending the week-long National Youth Leadership Program. The campers shipped to deserving scouts and Eagle Projects. Offering these stickers will be good for our town by making recycling easier, and it fits the scout mission of natural resource conservation. Lastly, we ask for a mention on the Madison Recycling webpage, so residents know the stickers are available and where to purchase them. Thank you.
Any questions? So, Bob?
I just wanted to say, I think it's a great idea. My wife is very big into recycling, and right now we have it painted on our cans. That'll look a lot better, so I think it's a great idea.
When are you going to start selling them? And how much do they cost?
They cost us $3 each. When are we selling them?
Well, we haven't had them printed up yet. We've gotten some estimates.
Okay.
And, so, once we get approval, we don't want to load them without getting our approval. No load of them.
I would anticipate once we...
Okay. I think it's a great idea.
And part of what you're presenting to the borough is kind of cooperation, so we'll have that posted on RoseNet, so people will know as part of our recycling program that Troop 7, they can get their labels from Troop 7. Also, as you, little reminders, you go door-to-door, several residents have registered on the no solicitor list, so you can get that from the Madison Police, so you know which houses to skip.
I have a no soliciting sign up, but I thought that civic organizations and political organizations didn't have to necessarily abide by it. Does anybody remember what our ordinance exempts from that? You can knock on my door.
Okay, there you go. And I can, so I can knock at your door too, then?
Yeah.
You have First Amendment right.
One thing I also wanted to mention we could do is when we're going to door-to-door, if you got, you have a, you know, you publish that, it's out on the website, and also you've mailed that out annually, you know, some type of recycling guidelines, we can also hand out when they purchase the stickers, just as a reminder, you know, how to recycle. And I know there's new recycling with the plastics.
Yep. And when everything's ready, you can work with Jim to get everything up on the website and coordinate with our recycling program. Thank you very much, and Richard, please tell your parents that we miss them. It's not the same without Gene and Rose here, so.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and, but they'll probably be watching this on television.
Yes, that's true. I saw him at Begel Chateau the other day, and he said, "Right now I don't have anything for you, Bob, but I'm watching." Thank you. Thanks again for the great work. Okay, item two, appropriation of additional $6,000 restoration renovation east wing of Hartley Dodge. Ostrich.
Right. Yeah, Bob Vogels here also. This is, Bob came before us for an additional $6,000 because the construction drawings and architectural drawings are more. And so that means we had to ask more from the county in the grant, and we have to have this 2080 split, so we need an additional $6,000 with the $10,000 you already approved. Questions? No. Okay. So we would like that approved tonight.
So that is ordinance 39, which is listed for introduction tonight. Okay. And you're still on. $200,000 for remediation of Bailey Ellard.
So phase one of the remediation has taken place, and that was under Mr. Landrigan, and he requested that amount of money from the Open Space Trust Fund two years ago?
Yeah.
And so the additional $200,000 will complete the remediation. This is actually part of the, part of, one of the fields, so it's important that we remove the soil and replace it, and then we're going to do some seeding, and I would hope that you would approve this. Also, it will improve the field and the surface and, questions?
Just one thing to note, I had in my report, we are expecting to get some level of reimbursement from the state, I believe, for the entire cost of the, what's going to be over half a million dollars now, correct?
Yes, you're right. You're right, right.
From the DEP.
Right. We hope to get that, yes. It's just a question of how much it is. So, right now, if you look at what the projects have, we've taken from the Open Space Trust Fund this year, about $26,000 left. But there will be some reimbursement and some adjustments to that number, because you're right, there will be money coming in.
For a while. When that money comes in, Ray, do we put it back in the Open Space Fund?
We do.
Okay, so we took a lot of there. And we'll get a report, I guess, in July. It'll have an update with all the projects that we've currently approved, plus what they expect to try to bring before us for the rest of the year.
Well, yeah. I mean, if somebody, yeah, I mean, it's, that's, as I said before, that's, depends on who puts their projects in front of us.
No, no, I understand, but it's just a snapshot in time.
Yeah, it's a snapshot. Correct.
Now that we've approved a bunch of things, I'd just like to get a sort of an idea. Plus, we're going to have an idea by then. We've gotten some money from the MAF, and then we'll have to make our bond payment in the third quarter?
August 15th.
Okay. Do we also have to roll over the, the notice here?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And pay $115,000.
Okay. So maybe we conclude all that. Thank you.
Okay, so this is ordinance 40, which is listed for introduction. Sports-related concussion protocol, ostrich, and we also, I...
Zach just stepped out.
Zach just stepped out.
Zach just stepped out, okay. It's, it's very straightforward. It's, it's a protocol that, it's the current protocol for suspected concussions. An athlete should be referred to a medical professional and not allowed to return to action until they receive medical clearance. And where Madison is mandating training, that should raise coaches' awareness of concussion signs and symptoms. And there are only a few non-contact sports in Madison. We will need to add the training to their existing programs. And this listed protocol is standard practice. So it's a very good thing.
Yes.
Because kids are getting concussions in cities.
Yeah, I agree, it's a great idea, and I think Ray told me today that this is something that's being recommended by the Joint Insurance Fund to us, so I think that would help us overall with our rates going forward.
Yes. Okay, and this is Resolution 160, Consent Agenda. Now, ordinances for hearing, clerk, please read the statement.
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for hearing, were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at a regular meeting of the council, held on Monday, May 11th, 2015. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 34, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending ordinance 11, 2014 pertaining to the salary ranges for certain non-union full-time employees.
I open the hearing for ordinance 34, 2015. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 34-2015.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 34-2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 35, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing certain affordable housing provisions of Chapter 195 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance.
I open the hearing for ordinance... I open the hearing for ordinance 35, 2015. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 35-2015.
I'll second.
Any counsel discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 35, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 36, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $21,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for purchase of a VPI-24 port analog recording system for the Madison Police Department.
I open the hearing for ordinance 36, 2015. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Ordin, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 36, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 36, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 37, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $25,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for signalization improvements.
I open the hearing for ordinance 37, 2015. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 37-2015.
I second that motion.
Counsel discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 37, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 38, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison adopting a redevelopment plan in accordance with NJSA 40A:12A-1 et cetera.
I open the hearing for ordinance 38, 2015. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward to the...
Evening. I'd like to start by commenting on last...
Actually, start with your name and...
Barbados, it's Arlena Court. Sorry. Last night's meeting was very good. The neighbors were great. They had thoughtful questions and comments. They expressed support for affordable housing. And as I said to the administrator, I thought the administrator and governing body did a very good job of presenting the proposed project. However, the proposed plan has its roots in the threat of an obligation to build 1,000 affordable housing units. Remove this threat, and the discussion would have been more like that of a developer appearing before a zoning and planning board, where the developer would need to address the tough question of what is the impact on the proposed project. There appears to be three primary factors driving this ordinance and the overall proposed plan. Number one, a concern with the next steps if the court denies the DJ motion. Number two, a belief that presenting the 44-unit plan to the court in connection with the DJ motion would actually improve our chances. And number three, the identified approach for obtaining funding for the proposed plan. And I'd just like to comment on each one of them. First off, with regard to improving the chances, if we went in with a plan that shows 50% of the 88 goal, doesn't this send the message that Madison can easily meet its obligation? What if we went in with a plan for all 88? Don't you think that the court would be tempted to stretch us to do more than 88? Perhaps we should consider going in with a lower goal that reflects more of the proposals or plans that are already on the drawing board with the building department. Concerning the money, the rehabilitation statute calls for determination that a significant portion of structures are in a deteriorator, substandard condition. There's a continuing pattern of vacancy, abandonment, or underutilization of properties with a persistent arid of property tax payments, tax payments, and a program of rehabilitation may be expected to prevent further deterioration and promote overall development of the community. It's difficult to see how the Civic Center fits within this definition. It has been successfully and continually used for many public purposes for about 15 years. Significant investments have been made in the building. It would be hard to reconcile that history of use with a conclusion that it's currently in a deteriorated or substandard condition. I sincerely applaud, sincerely do, the governing body and administration's effort in identifying creative ways in which to pursue public purposes. This one seems to be pushing the envelope. Wouldn't matter if it weren't for the impact. Concerning next steps, if we lost the DJ motion, we can always appeal. But any court decision would be given a period of time to achieve compliance. We will not be expected to have this all done within a few years. Some last considerations. While any court decision would be good for just 10 years, the impact of Walnut will be permanent. If we win on the 88, the proposed plan transfers half of Madison's wide obligation to a single street of 12 homes. That seems like a heavy, intensive density change. Winning at this stage with the DJ motion is insufficient justification to adopt a plan with this density, a density that would likely not be approved so easily, if at all, by the planning board under normal circumstances. Per the case law, the municipality should make as much use as possible the planning board's expertise and experience so that the proposed project is suitable for the municipality. I recognize that that's exactly what you're trying to do now. But under the proposed plan, the planning board is going to get just 45 days from May 11. It's just going to be under the wire to consider this plan in time for the DJ motion in July. It shouldn't be needlessly rushed on this, I would represent to you. Lastly, once the proposed plan is presented to the court, it's going to be difficult, if not impossible, to pull it back based upon input from the planning board. For example, what if the planning board does find the density to be too much? In summary, we don't sufficiently increase our chances with the DJ by presenting this plan with it such that the impact to these residents can be justified. And again, they were great last night. They really were. It could have been a lot worse than it was, but they were very respectful, and they had good comments and good questions. And we are, by this plan, we are effectively converting a temporary risk that should be borne by all residents into a permanent impact to just a few residents.
Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 38-2015.
I'll second.
Counsel discussion? Just to remind, for those that have not been following this, or were not there last night, the, this project also includes rebuilding the Civic Center and establishing 10,000-square-foot new Civic Center for the Borough of Madison as part of the redevelopment of the site. So it would be redevelopment along with the 40 units.
Just one point of clarification, because Martin raised, you know, can we go in with a lower number? That's something I asked earlier. Maybe, Matt, you can talk about the fact that we've already made a representation in a previous round, what we think the minimum number is for Madison. Is that correct?
Yeah, you, your planner in the third round of COA, which no one got through the third round, you had come up with 88 units.
118 and 30 credits moving forward for a total of 88.
So a total of 88 units. So you've already made that representation publicly several years ago.
Okay.
And because of the debacle at COA, I think that, based on your planner's recommendation, that's the number that we should stick with. And I can tell you, a lot of towns are doing the exact same thing. What they were, what they had judged to be the affordable units for third-round processing at COA is what they're going to be pursuing in court now, because there's a basis for it. There's a logical, not arbitrary basis for coming up with that number.
So going lower than that is not really an option at this point?
No, it's not, because I think what will end up happening is, that's a public record. So you're going to have people, developers will come forward and saying, well, what changed between when you were going to go to COA several years ago and today? So I think that, you know, it's probably much better to be consistent, and course like consistency.
And one other thing, this is 40 units, not 44, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion, counsel? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 38, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to the second invitation for discussion from the public, and this is when you may comment on anything on your mind, within reason. Please step forward, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introductions of ordinances. Clerk, please read the statement.
The ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for June 22, 2015. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
And just to note that because of our Wednesday meeting, it is the, we skip a meeting before our next, for the hearing. I call up ordinances for first reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 39, 2015, is an ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $6,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for professional services for the restoration and renovation to the east wing of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building.
Mayor, I move ordinance 39-2015.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 40, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $200,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for Phase II site remediation of the Bailey Ellard playing fields.
Mayor, I move ordinance 40-2015.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 41, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $5,740 from the Fire Trust, the Fire Department Trust Fund to purchase hydrant flags.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 41-2015.
Second.
Any counsel discussion on this item? These are the, public knows the flags are put in the wintertime, so in case of snow, they, the hydrants stand out better. Okay, roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 42, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending ordinance 2, 2015, appropriating $950,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the road improvements on Ridgeville Avenue to increase the appropriation from 950,000 to 1,050,000.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 42-2015.
I'll second that. Counsel discussion? And this includes the acceptance of two alternates. One is the resetting of the slate sidewalk and the, also the radar signs.
Right, two of them.
Two of them. Okay, roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Clerk, please read the statement.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move R. 159 through R. 165.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any need to be pulled? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers.
Okay. Public safety, $15,144.82. Health and public assistance, $3,348.63. Public works and engineering, $149,055.86. Community affairs, $10,825.24. Finance and borough clerk, $48,071.98. Utilities, $429,138.39. The total as amended is $655,564.92.
I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no new business, and with that, I move, we adjourn. Mr. Ordnance.
It's like 10 minutes in. I gotta go watch another episode. I never saw them. If you ever want the whole set, I think you'll have to do it.
I know the feeling.
I never watched it. I'm so...